And I shall be your moderator this evening. The hour of 7:00 P. M. Having arrived and the quorum is established, I therefore call this fiscal year 2025 special town meeting to order. Those of you who wish to celebrate our democracy and freedoms, please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance to the flag up to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just been informed, the rear speakers are not working. We are going to miss Joe Worthington, a beloved DPW employee who died this weekend over a tragic accident. I would like to give him and all of the Maynard residents who have passed away over the past year, a moment of silence in remembrance. Before proceeding this evening, I'd like to spend a few minutes to kind of go over the ground rules for tonight's meeting. Per chapter, or excuse me, per section 2.2 of chapter of the charter, I am required to appoint a deputy moderator who shall complete town meeting should I be unable to continue. Therefore, I appoint Mr. William Coleman as deputy moderator. This appointment needs ratification by the town meeting, so those in favor of William Coleman as deputy, please raise your ballot. Okay? All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Per the Commonwealth Massachusetts law, there is no smoking on school property in neither the building nor the grounds. Please take a moment right now to turn off or put on vibrate, and I'll do the same. Your cell phones or any other electronic device as a courtesy to your fellow residents. We have some non-residents here this evening as guests. If there are no valid objections, they will be allowed to remain, but in no case will they be allowed to vote. They are asked to sit in an assigned area in the first several rows off here to my left. They shall be wearing an identification tag. Guests may be allowed to speak, but only if requested by a town official and only to provide information and not opinions. The town clerk is required to provide the attorney general's office with detailed notes on every article and person who speaks at this meeting. Therefore, I shall ask you to clearly state your name and street address each time you speak. There are microphones at the front of each aisle. Please line up behind the microphone closest to you, and I shall call upon you when it's your turn to speak. Since this is all being recorded, I may ask you to start over if we cannot understand or hear you. Please address all questions or comments to me, the moderator, and not to any particular individual, and I will assign somebody to answer. If you have more than one question or statement, please go to the rear of the line for the next question or statement in order that as many people as possible get a chance to speak. Depending on the answer that you receive, I may allow one follow-up question. My job is to balance the best flow of new information for voters to evaluate while keeping the meeting itself as efficient as possible. Therefore, it is important that you make your point concisely and stay on topic. If I feel that there is no new information being presented, I shall then call for the vote. Our constitution gives us the right to make our opinions known and ask questions, and in fact, I encourage you to do so. However, that does not give anybody the right to be disrespectful to other audience members or to town officials. Should I feel that's happening, I shall ask you to stop speaking and sit down. Likewise, this is a legislative body and should be thoughtful. Please do not cheer, boo, or any other things, but actually listen to what each person has to say before making your final decision. Per Maynard Town Bylaws, Chapter 1, Section 14, a secret ballot vote shall be taken for any article or amendment concerning the following topics: wages, benefits, or conditions of employment; the acquisition, sale, or lease of any real estate; borrowing; authorization for expenditures equal to or greater than a tenth of a percent of last year's budget, which comes out to be $54,000. Each person shall have a ballot. Tonight's starting number is number one. Please check your ballot number right now and make sure that you have number one as the first ballot. When I call for a hand vote, please raise your hand with the ballot book so that I can see you. To facilitate counting secret ballots, please do not fold them. Simply hold them upside down and drop them into the basket when the collector comes around. I shall call for an article. The individual from the sponsoring organization will then move the article. All articles have been previously given to the town clerk, but any article that has moved differently than what was given to her in writing must be given to me in writing. I shall only read an article if it is moved differently than that that is in the warrant. For lengthy articles, I will give a summary. An amendment to an article must be given to me in writing and must include the sponsor's name. It is, it will then be reviewed by town council and by myself to see if the language meets the criteria of the attorney general's acceptance. There may be an occasional time when an amendment cannot be accepted, such as an expansion of scope or a conflicting state statute. To make an amendment, raise your hand with your ballot and be recognized and state that you wish to make an amendment. For your convenience, there is an amendment form in the lobby. I shall ask that you state the amendment and ask for a second. If there is no second, I cannot accept the amendment. I shall then ask you to bring the filled-out amendment to me once I receive the written amendment. I shall read the amendment, and expect this process to take several minutes. If you will open your warrant, you will find some additional information on pages two, three, and four. Voting, I have grouped articles four and five, which are similar and require a secret ballot to be discussed and voted together at the same time. If you agree with that, please raise your ballot book now. Thank you. If you disagree with that, please raise your ballot book. Okay, the majority, the motion carries. Well, the select board, please move the first article.
Good evening.
Hello. I move to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Okay. Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Okay.
The purpose of this article is to amend the town's general fund budget to reflect updated revenue from the state budget in the amount of $126,588 and the updated and more precise debt service obligation to fund the construction of the new Green Meadow Elementary School. The increase for the general government line is to cement, supplement personnel contracting funds to address previously unsettled employment agreements and contractually obligated expenses. The increase to the public works line is for the upfront cost of installing temporary fuel tanks to replace the already dysfunctional tanks at the Winter Street yard. And the increase to the Maynard Public Schools is to supplement their facility maintenance budget.
Okay, no discussion. This is going to require a secret ballot. If you will notice in the slide there that the education, we have upped it to $76,000, which is beyond the $54,000 trigger point, so it kicks in a secret ballot. So if you agree, please mark your ballot number one with a yes vote. If you disagree, use a no vote. The collectors will be around to collect your ballot. Please do not fold them. Turn them upside down and put them in the ballot. While the counters to counting, we'll move on to Article 2. Mr. Crenshaw.
I move to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Thank you. Mr. Crenshaw.
Thank you. My name's Bill Crenshaw. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee, and the committee oversees the Community Preservation Fund, which consists of monies collected from a surcharge on your real estate taxes. And every year, we bring to you some projects to be funded by those monies. And this time, we're bringing two projects forward. The first project is from the Conservation Commission, and they're actually finishing up something they've been working on. It's at Ice House Landing, doing the Phase 2 work. Ice House Landing is on Winter Street, near the DPW Yard. It's where the kayak launch is. And they're finishing up some seeding improvements, new signage, and some native plantings. And they're asking for $8,466 for that. The second project is from the Historic Commission, and they're asking for money to move the old horse-watering trough from in front of the old fire station over to Memorial Park. The old fire station has been sold, and they want to move it to a more central location, something where it won't be affected by construction or the intersection, things like that. The cost on that one's estimated to be $20,000. It's an estimate, probably a little high, but the way it works is if they don't spend all the money, all the rest of the money comes back to the fund and is available for projects in the following years.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, no further discussion or no discussion. While all of those in favor, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article number three.
Mr. Roderick, I'd like to move to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do," "to act," or "act thereon."
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Natasha Rivera. I'm the school committee chair. This is Mary Bradley. She's also on the school committee, and we are here to present some information about a project that's been underway for a few years and bring it to town meeting vote to decide where the next steps will be. So this project looks to seek $3.4 million for the replacement of alumni bleachers, which would also require restrooms, utility infrastructure, and ADA compliant, in addition to some improvements with the concession and walkway and pathway improvements as well. So why do we need this project done? This project, the bleachers for Maynard, the Alumni Field have been, they're over 50 years old, and they're in a state of no longer able to be occupied. They are deemed unsafe. They are not compliant with code, which is the plumbing inspector code or ADA compliant. And we're looking to put forward an article that brings the Alumni Field up to an area where it can be safe and used for events for the community and for school. The current bleachers, and this is kind of just to recap, the current bleachers, we've had an inspection that was done in August of 2022, the building inspector, and that was when the last time the bleachers were able to be used for school events. At this time, there are rentals that are being used. Current features of the project, accessibility bleachers, accessible bleachers will seat 750 individuals, which will be 300 fewer than the current capacity at the Alumni Field. You'll have an ADA-compliant press box with a lift that would be required to make it ADA-compliant for WAVM. And you would have accessibility code and compliant restrooms for a separate building station, a separate building that would need to be erected. This is required based on plumbing code. This is not something that was initiated by the school department in any case. This is what we were told to, that was required if we wanted to build bleachers. The enhancements to that area would include a family restroom, a drinking station, a community-accessible automated external defibrillator that would be accessible in the recreation center as well. And you would also have permanent bleachers that would last at least 50-plus years that would be owned by Maynard, that would not be rental, that would not need to be rented moving forward. These also, the designs that were created, were to allow for the future expansion of Alumni Field, so there has been conversations about the track, when the track gets replaced, the opportunity for a soccer field that be expanded, and that has been built into the designs that have been proposed and created so far. Within the presentation, you'll see on one slide, the restroom would be, the restroom facility building would be to the bottom left, that orange box, and the bleachers would be on the south side of where they currently are. We did explore the opportunity to move the bleachers to the front of Great Road to make it closer to bathroom facility and maybe enhance the field house, but because the code does not allow, it was too far away, and the space, the setback that would be required, it didn't allow for that consideration. But other options were considered to be explored on where bleachers might be easier to use that would incorporate less needs to build out a consistent, or a bathroom facility. This is a diagram of the facility that would be built. Just as I mentioned, they have a family room. You have the number of bathroom toilets and hand sinks. They're dictated by occupancy of the area, so they're very prescribed code-specific. You have storage. The front area would be a concession space. One of the areas of what we allowed or what we were, conversations came up about maintenance because you need to maintain these facilities, and by having one restroom as a family, we could use that to maybe allow that as open and not have to open all of the other restrooms depending on who would be using the place. So it would have some control of use of the space as a whole, depending on who was renting This is just an indication of some of the areas that would need to be brought up to compliance for the parking, so that's a municipal parking lot by the Boys and Girls Club. So we would, we were able to use that as the parking for the project, but there is ADA-compliant aspects that would need to be enhanced there. So they will see like the crosswalk painting, the extended walkway that would need to be to allow for a wheelchair to be, to actually go into the parking lot from there. All the other parts are already incorporated, so you have the rapid flashing. This would also include enhancing the entryway into Alumni Field from Great Road. Right now, it is gravel. It's usually very water and wet. There's no actual ADA-accessible walkway entry from Great Road. This would allow that area to be redone to make sure that individuals can access it regardless of their mobility. So since FY '23, this project has all, so far spent almost about $460,000 for designs, rentals, project manager. The, all of this has either been funded through CPC funds for part of the designs or free cash allocations through town vote previously. There have been countless hours, obviously, that have been dedicated, so you have, I know our athletic director, superintendent, DPW director have been, they've met with the design teams. They spent a lot of time building out or seeking questions to inform the town, the task force that for the designs, as far as what would be required, what's accessible for the program for the, what is the, planning board, sorry, planning board, to make sure that the requirements are in line with, to make the project go, allow the project to move forward. Real quick before, sorry, back on that list. I just wanted to highlight that after FY '25, the year that we're in, there is no funding source remaining for what to do with the bleachers. So at this point, there is rental allowed for what we have now, but beyond that, there is without a project approval to move forward, there is no funding to look to tear down what is there or to pursue any other long-term alternative. The financial considerations for residents, this has been looked at as for a three-and-a-half percent for a 15-year bond with total, with interest that would total out to 4.5, approximately 4.5 million. So after 15 years, the project would be paid off, and we would have permanent structures available for use at that area. If what that comes out to is about $70 annually for an average single-family household, based on the $540,000, $504,000, $504,000, oh my gosh, yes, thank you. And then the earliest expected tax bill that this would be seen would be January 2026. There are unknown considerations, so if we, if we choose, questions have been asked about, well, what about continuing to rent? There are areas that current rental options do not satisfy code, and specifically, that would be around the number of toilets and hand sinks. So what we have right now is not compliant. They're, we're not, we don't have the ADA compliance as well. So what we have now is not a sustainable long-term option unless we're looking to add funding to add hand sinks or water stations in some way, which has not been a topic to, brought And the other part, too, is that I think everyone can probably attest to the fact that this project is really long overdue. So the longer that this continues to be unaddressed, it does create a liability, continues to be a liability for the town until we improve and either make it what it needs to be up to code and also to minimize the safety concerns that the current bleachers still possess and possess for users. If we have permit structures available, this will allow us to consider renting, going back to renting. Right now, we don't have that option as much, so we, the building itself, the restroom facility can be, if people want to rent the space, that is something that they could also rent. It would be an enhancement to the area. Right now, with temporary bleachers and the ones that are, that are currently erected that are not occupied, it limits our ability to explore rental opportunities or to seek funding through hosting events there beyond what we are able to do right now. Next steps. So if funding is approved, this is a timeline that would be put forward to kind of continue on. So assuming funding is approved and an election, election is called as well, and that passes there, we would need to reengage with the OPM, the project manager and the designer, finalize bid documents, go forward with the contract bidding, and all the way to the end, which would be project completion by next August. And this is just, the next thing is just what a yes, no, or no vote means. So yes, the vote would allow, would then mean the next step would be an election that would need to be held. The select board is the governing body to call an election, and they need to do that only, it has to be by a two-thirds majority, not a simple majority. And a no vote would stall the project in its current capacity, and we would need to, we have no funding opportunity to demolish or pursue anything else beyond the current rental. Mary? All right. That's all we have.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Please come up to the microphones.
Let me get my notes ready.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Glenn Conig, 10 Charles Street.
Please speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Glenn Conig, Charles Street. Is that better? Okay. First of all, what does OPM stand for? Because I didn't find that reference.
The project manager. Owners project.
Owners project manager.
Owners project manager.
Oh, okay. Is there anything that was looked at in terms of, because we get changes in the weather about flooding or drainage or anything like that in connection with this project?
Are you talking about on the field or the bleachers themselves?
Well...
Yeah, the field isn't being looked at in the scope of this project, but the construction, I know that they have, I don't know, not particularly that I recall. I haven't been part of any like drainage conversations, but I think that the project manager, he can certainly look into that and get some questions if there's any drainage concerns.
Okay. I just, you know, because of how the weather is going these days, I just thought it would make sense to see if there was anything to do with that because I didn't see anything in the materials.
So that's two questions, so I'll have to ask you to go to the end of the line so other people can do, but please... So I'll have to ask you to go to the end of the line so other people can do, but please ask more questions. I just want to give everybody an opportunity. I'll recognize the microphone to the center.
Thank you. I'm Jan Jones. I live on Nick Lane and thank you for all the hard work you've done on this. My question is, how did, can you talk a little bit about how you came to decide to have fewer seats available than we have now? I mean, there were probably a lot of thought went into that, but if you could explain that, I think that would be good.
Sure. So we originally started with a visitor bleacher that has since been torn down in the current capacity of, which is about a little over a thousand or?
Microphone, please.
If we talk about, originally, we had the visitor park, the visitor seats, which was about three hundred on the Boys and Girls Club side, and then we've got nine fifty currently. So we're actually cutting this down by just about fifty percent. And it's basically cost-driven, to be honest with you. And also, we looked at other schools that, you know, were brought up to us to see what comparable schools and bigger schools were, were using for, for their seating.
And one other thing to add to that as well is we looked at what could reduce the cost overall of the project. And so there were certain thresholds dependent on bathrooms that would impact bathroom, like you would need less sinks or toilets. And seven fifty also allowed for the removal of a center easement in there, within there, within the bleachers. So it allowed for, I guess, a cost savings of, and it, but it, it's very much like a hundred, every hundred and fifty seats. So if you drop down to like seven hundred, you don't necessarily get a savings. It's very much code-driven on what, how much the capacity is to what, if you require third easement or certain, certain toilets. So we looked at the seats, that the capacity for events, how much they have, have had used, and, and also take it into account that we would be absorbing in the visitors into these bleachers because we no longer had a visitor bleacher as well.
So what happens when more people come to the events than can, than you can fit?
I, I think that people would need to have, hang out, you know, and along, right now, people are standing up around the perimeter by the fence. You know, it, it could happen. I mean, it could happen before as well. So I, I think that, I, I don't think that's the majority where you're gonna, like most events are going to be full at capacity all the time. But it, it could happen right now and I think we'd probably have to take it on a case-by-case basis if we're seeing a trend where once occupancy starts picking up again because we have seats available, then, you know, if there's, you could still rent if needed, like one, you know, one, so it might be like only needed for football. Like right now, we have rentals, it's two rentals and they are done in the fall. And then they, they take them back because we don't want to pay the whole year and then they bring them back later on in the spring.
Yeah, that approach makes sense to me.
I, I'm gonna, I recognize the microphone to the right. You had two questions already, follow-up. So you can go to the end of the line and ask again.
Hi, my name's Mary Frame Johnston. I live at Three Kings Street in Maynard. I'm interested in knowing, first of all, what the overall enrollment in Maynard High School is and how many student athletes are going to benefit from having games on the field, as well as how many people typically attend these games?
Let me look to see. I know we had some numbers that our athletic director, let me pull that up real quick to see what we had. So I know going back to twenty-twenty-two, and this is where COVID really kind of impacted because we don't have a lot of information. Oh, thank you, Mary. So you have, you have numbers that go from five hundred seats, so twenty-twenty-one, you have five hundred of the first game, you know, for Asbit, seven hundred and eighty-eight. So it depends on, like, these are just ticket sales. This doesn't mean that this isn't all occupancy in the area. So you have athletes that are also, that are not part of ticket sales, but they are the teams, the coaches. You have student, the band, who is also there that would add to the occupancy of the space as well. Yeah, and this is just the, the football information. So you also have the events that we have graduations also when the weather's.
And are there other teams besides the football team that would use this space?
Soccer also uses the, the space for alumni. We, they are usually a little earlier. So the football ones are usually the, the, the later evenings, like Friday nights, but during the week, you have the soccer games as well.
Okay, I'll recognize the microphone to my left.
I'm Lisa Oaks Dunn, I'm one eighty-eight Main Street. My question has to do with, since we are. Can you not hear me? I'm sorry. Having to do with the fact that we are already absorbing the cost of Green Meadow, has there been any effort by the town to look into state grants and/or corporate sponsorships to try to offset some of the cost of this?
I know that we've looked into, oh, I, I don't know, we've looked into sponsorship grants. A lot of the, the grants, like the NFL has one. You have, it's only specific, certain towns would qualify, so it depends on the, the dynamic, the diversity or the city makeup for the towns. So they have criteria that would allow for eligibility for some of those grants that not all towns, or we don't always fit into them. In sponsorship, we do have sponsors who will provide for like field, like to, for field maintenance, but it's not necessarily to contribute to the field, like three point four million to, for the cost of the field or the construction.
I'm asking even to offset parts of it. Has there been an effort to reach out to the area businesses to ask them if they would sponsor it?
There are sponsorships that, that people do contribute right now, but it, it's put towards, again, field maintenance because the, the budget for field maintenance alone is also not covered by the, entirely by the budget.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
My name's Tom Borman, twelve Oscar's Way. I don't have any questions. I have a couple of comments, if that's all right. Sure. Just anecdotally, I coached football at, at Maynard for a few years, recently retired from that job. Last season, an elderly woman, and she was elderly, in her nineties, I'm guessing. She comes to me and she goes, where's sir, where's the bathroom? And I point to the porta potty and she goes, I, I can't go there. Where's the real bathroom? There is no real bathroom. That's, that's the bathroom. And she was just shaking her head. I look over, there's eight football players in line at the porta potty. They don't get a chance to go to the bathroom before they have to go out to the field. So just, it was an embarrassment for me as a longtime Maynard resident that we don't even have a bathroom for our visitors to that field. I, I don't want to pay any more taxes than anyone else here does, trust me. But six dollars a month seems fairly reasonable to fix a problem that we have kicked the can down the road for way too long, way too long. I've coached football for forty-four years. I'm not exaggerating. This is one of the worst facilities I've experienced in my forty-four years of coaching. It's time to fix the problem. And, and it's, I, I understand, again, six bucks a month, it may be a burden for some of us, but if you have a roof on your house and that roof needs replacing, you replace it. You budget for it. You don't wait, you don't ask for someone else to fix your roof for you. You go ahead and take care of the problem and fix your roof. This is our roof. It's a source of civic pride. That's a heavily traveled intersection and people look at that field and go, what? I, I had a coach tell me, this field hasn't changed since I played here in thirty-five years ago. So again, folks, again, I understand it's money. We all pay too high a taxes as it is, but for the short money that they're talking on a monthly basis, we can take care of a serious problem right now.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hello, my name's Tom Hesbok. I live at two Chandler Street and I do have a list of comments. I'm, I'm also on the Recreation Commission and I was also on the Field Use Task Force and the Bleacher Task Force. I was one of the people who called in every Wednesday at one-thirty to the meetings while the meetings were going on. So this project, I, I have to compliment the team that's been working on this project with Chris Huntress and Mike Ria and team. They've done a great job. There's nothing gold-plated in this. The presentation that Natasha gave, you know, talks to what we talked about as a committee and it's right, you know, the, the project has a big price tag for what it is, for bleachers, bathrooms, concession stand, and ADA compliance for accessibility, all of which is super important. But the games are not played in the bleachers. They're played on the field. And the kind of, the coach kind of alluded to it and I think, I think he was the same coach at the, at the awards night, mentioned the fact that the field is terrible. So for three point four million dollars, you're going to get bleachers, but you're still going to have the same field. Now, DPW's done a great job with what they have, but still, the field does not hold grass. There's roughly a hundred and sixty student athletes that use that field between girls' field hockey.
So I'm gonna have you to stick to the subject at hand, which is the bleachers, not the field. Thank you.
This is the subject, sir. So there's a hundred and sixty athletes, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls, middle school soccer, high school soccer, field hockey, and there's twenty football players, all of which use that complex. They play games, people come spectating those games. So we need to consider the entire project. I feel like the town needs to look at this holistically and a no on this would slow this down and maybe give the town an opportunity to solve the actual problem, which is the project writ large. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Robert Morel, four Guyer Road. I'm cognizant of the fact that the, the committee looked like they spent a good deal of time trying to find a solution to this and I'm aware of the value of athletics to young people. But in this current find, in this current climate of economics, I don't believe we should be adding another three or four million dollars of debt onto our load. I saw that we have a, a debt servicing budget of two million, one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I believe we need to start cutting down on that before we start adding more debt on top of it. So I think citizens voting on this, I believe should vote no on it.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Alexandra Howard, nine Fowler Street. Just for context, so fifteen years, seventy dollars. I was wondering how much the average five hundred and four thousand dollar house would cost in increased taxes for the Green Meadow School, if you're able to give us those numbers tonight?
I, I don't have that information as part of this.
All right, so it's not final, but approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Per average.
Per average home, thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, I'm Mary Frame Johnston, three Kings Street in Maynard. I'm, I asked earlier what the enrollment was at Maynard High School. I'm just trying to get an idea of how many students percentage-wise are going to benefit from this.
It's, it's not just the students that benefit from, it's the spectators. So the students, you know, are playing as well, but the spectators, it's families. So you have grandparents, siblings who come to, you know, watch the sporting events while the students are actually on the field playing. So you do have students who are in the band, so they might actually have a place to be in the bleachers, which is what they used to do before. Okay.
Three hundred and nine students at the school?
Probably about right now, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. I have to look to see what the enrollment number is.
All right. Considering the amount of money that's involved here, is this a worthwhile, how is this a worthwhile expenditure, given the small number of students who actually play out of the three hundred and nine students at the school?
It's not just the high school that play. So there's middle school, there's a lot of events. I'm sorry?
Speak up.
There's not just, so there's middle, sometimes there's middle school that will play on the JV as well. So it depends, it's not just the high school alone that plays events there. What was the first part of your question? The benefit? What got us to this place was because somebody got hurt. They're unsafe. There's students who get hurt with the bleachers they are. So this is kind of what we're trying to move past, is that they're not safe and we can't do anything right now in their current capacity to move us forward unless we're meeting code, which requires a build.
Okay. All right, thank you for answering my questions.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you. Julia Magnussen from Roosevelt Street. One of the unknowns on here is town legal exposure for delaying solutions. I'm wondering if there are any pending lawsuits about it? And if not, once the project is approved and goes into motion, is the town then protected from potential legal, I don't know, legal implications?
Suits, yep.
Yeah, suits.
I, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak for what would the town be protected for. I can just say that you're, we'd be making corrective action to bring the, the area up to code. Right now, it's been told multiple times that it's not by the building inspector. So that's the unknown factor. I, I think it just takes, you know, one person to file a complaint or whatever, be it ADA compliant or code restriction, but that's right now what we don't know.
But currently, there's no, there's no suits.
Would town council please speak to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Adam Costa, Town Council. So no, I'm not aware of any pending lawsuits against the town. I just conferred with the town administrator as well because very often, those types of lawsuits won't come to my firm. They'll go to insurance counsel for the town and I verify that he's not aware of any such lawsuits having been reported to insurance counsel either.
So the question was, would paying this money preclude future lawsuits?
So obviously, as legal counsel, I can't offer any guarantee as to when the town may or may not be sued. Certainly, a safer facility reduces the likelihood of a lawsuit. Less safe facility increases the possibility of a lawsuit, whether it's a school building or bleachers or any other municipal facility. So, you know, I can't tell you what will preclude a lawsuit. In fact, I can tell you that there's no guarantee that new bleachers will mean no, no future lawsuits, but obviously, a safer facility reduces the risk exposure for the town and therefore reduces the possibility of litigation.
Thank you.
Microphone in the center.
Yeah, Roger Stillwater, seventeen Sunset Road, Maynard. And I'm speaking for the seniors. The seniors have repeatedly wanted a senior center. They voted overwhelmingly to support the Green Meadows School. They asked for money to be set aside for the senior center and here we are, still not doing anything about the seniors, but we're going to do a recreational, have a recreational facility for the kids. We just spent six hundred, what was it, six hundred and fifty dollars for the average household to support the, the Green Meadows School and we're going to come back and ask for more money for the kids, for recreation, before we do the senior center? That's not right. So I have an urge of a no vote on this.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hello again, Tom Hesbok on two Chandler Streets, still, didn't move. I just, I, one other point I forgot to mention was that the Recreation Committee, I'm, I'm on the Recreation Commission, in our eleven January twenty-four meeting, voted to not support this project unless it included renovating the field and the playing surface for the student athletes, because the student athletes and the playing surface are what's really the most important thing in the safety of the student athletes. Thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Yeah, I'm here. Hello? Glenn Conig, I did raise it, but, yeah, I tried. Is this, okay. Glenn Conig, ten Charles Street. Not just the school year, but the whole year, how many days out of the whole year is this facility as a whole used by the school department? And how many days out of the whole year is it used by other people out of the three hundred and sixty-five days?
Right now, we don't, we're not, nobody's using it. So, and we had COVID not that long before. So this hasn't, the, the bleachers got condemned right after COVID. So there's not a lot of solid information. This is where people were asking about how much the occupancy in the area is. And so generally, we would look at ticket sales as one of those areas, but that is, you know, somewhat, it doesn't give the full occupancy of the space.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking for events, like not how many people, but how many days a year.
We used to have the seniors, they had the, the Relay for Life used to be there annually. We have football clubs in neighboring towns would rent the place, they'd rent the bleachers or rent the facilities as well, which right now isn't able to be done.
So you have, this doesn't completely answer my question, but I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to figure out the overall volume of, of time, you know, based on the whole year, percentage of, percentage of time that the space is empty versus it's actually in use. I go by there, I see people there since COVID.
It's generally empty, I would say, after football season. So I don't know what that's, maybe like November from there. I'm looking at my athletic director, it sounds about Thanksgiving. Thank you.
I, I didn't hear that.
Around Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Um, and then winter, uh, there's not a playing on the winter, on the field, and then, and then back in the spring, they will have bleachers. That's how it is right now, we will rental, we rent in the spring. So we take down the bleachers that we're renting now, um, after football season, and then we rent again in the spring.
So when you rent bleachers, is that still gonna happen after this is built, or that's only because the ones that are there are condemned?
No, that's, we're only renting because we don't have occupancy, we don't have bleachers right now for people to sit on.
So your rental costs will, for that will go away?
Right, there'll be no rental costs.
And your ticket sales will stay whatever they are, or increase, or what have you, depending on who wants to use it?
Yes.
All right, that's as best I can get, thank you.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Chris Klein, twelve Euclid Ave. Um, are concessions required for this type of project, and has consideration been made to the operational maintenance and staffing costs of that and the offsetting revenue of it?
Um, so the maintenance piece has been discussed, because it would require an additional, um, maintenance to maintain the bathrooms. This is where we went back and forth with, how do we minimize the use of the restrooms where there would not be all open at the same time? Having a, a family restroom would be, allow that opportunity where you could have maybe one restroom open, and you wouldn't have to open all ten or, um, whatever the, this, the, the full capacity would be. Concession is, is not required. Right now, we do have a concession space, um, it's, would be used for storage, because right now, the, the area lacks additional storage, and so the building that's there right now would, would still be, would be moved to storage, and then the front part of the building would be then reallocated for concession space.
And the operational and maintenance cost of that?
We would have staff would be maintaining it, so it would be, Maynard Public School staff would be maintaining the restrooms, um, and it would be controlled. So we, we've talked about this in our, um, task force that we would have, so they would be locked in the evening. Um, we would want the community to be able to use them, so we would be kind of, um, the school would be in control of unlocking it or, um, or locking the bathrooms, because they would be the ones maintaining them.
I was more concerned with the concessions, not the restrooms.
The concessions would be when there's a booster, there's the booster, the booster club, so they would be, you know, if they were looking to sell, um, goods, the, it would, it's really not, um, staff that really may use the concession space, it was really the boosters that would use that.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Anthony Medei, fifteen Sunset Road. Uh, I am wholeheartedly in favor of this. For, people are asking, that field is used not just by soccer, but it can be rented out, you can't without the bleachers. So you can rent that field out, for club teams will use it. So it's not just, there are adult leagues that could rent it out, that used to rent it out too. You have graduation on that field, the Relay for Life used to be there in the spring. Maynard Stowe Baseball will use that for all different ages of levels. You have the field events for the track and field. This extends out all the way into the summer, so this is a community resource, and, and as, uh, Mr. Borman pointed out, hundreds of people go by this every single day, and so they're gonna see this, it's a, it can be a point of pride. But that field is in use, pretty much, if you think about practices and that. There's somebody on that up until Thanksgiving, probably almost every single day. And in the spring, several days a week, there will be again, because there's also spring soccer, but then all the baseball fields, all of these things use it. The bottom line is, having served on two building committees, is that when you go and have anything assessed here, everything is, the answer is, it's outlived its useful life, and that's the case here. So it's, you, you kick the can down the road, at some point, you know, you're gonna have to deal with it. And so with, you, there's, it's completely unusable, and the money that you're putting into renting without getting anything, now you can have this facility, and then you can rent this facility out, and then you can offset those costs, and the concession stand is run strictly on volunteer labor by the boosters.
Mr. Moderator. My left.
Um, can I just add one thing that's come up? Um, so the cost, um, because this has come up, the cost has increased due to code changes. So as, if we don't act, code changes inform that, that's where the, in December twenty-three, code changes required additional information, or diff, additional restrooms and stuff. So if we had, as a town, looked at this, um, before COVID and had gone out, it, the project would have been millions of dollars cheaper. Um, so it doesn't get cheaper, it does get more, so even if we don't act on it now, just from delaying from the spring to the fall, it, the cost of the project already went up, because the cost of construction goes up. So just, that's just the dynamics of construction these days. But I also wanted to...
Microphone to my left. Robert Morell, four Guyer Road in Maynard. Uh, before I, could I get clarification on something real quick? Uh, what is the, uh, if you could, what is the annual tax burden increase per household? Just to clarify. For this. I believe that was answered.
For, for the bleachers?
Yeah, for this, this part of, this part of the budget.
I believe Natasha said seventy a year per average household?
Seventy a year, okay, thank you.
Dollars, seventy dollars a year.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's seven dollars a month per household, does not sound like a big deal. Uh, it's the cumulative tax burden, burden that I think people are most concerned about. If you came to us and gave us and, and asked for three million dollars because we needed to upgrade our water facilities, most people would say, yes, let's do it. It, we, a lot of people don't view this as being a core part of the government existence in a town like this, so they don't view it as important. If we were flush with cash, it would be different, but I don't believe we're flush with cash. So, again, I would, I would encourage people to vote no on this. Microphone to my right.
Ed Mullin, five Nancy Circle. I disagree with that gentleman. First of all, as so many people have said, this is a pivotal area for our community. We have two of them, the downtown and alumni field. People come in and see this. This has been an eyesore for four years. Now, my children say, Dad, I won't use the word cheap, why are you practical? Okay, I'll talk money. This is three point four million dollars. I agree, a lot of money, but fifty thousand times four, we've spent already two hundred thousand dollars, okay? We do nothing now. So now we spend fifty thousand dollars for the next five or six years. Now we're up to five hundred thousand dollars, and nothing's changed. So to do nothing would cost a, a whole lot of trouble for us, because once again, we got the yellow tape up there, we have no one using the facility. Like the prior gentleman said, if we upgrade that facility, we can rent that, and it will be an asset to the town. I view this as a pivotal point for our children, which is our future, and it's also for our community event. I walk that track two, that, two times a week, and this is a beautiful piece of property for the town of Maynard. I suggest that we look at this and pay our price and get beautification, uh, for Alumni Field. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna limit discussion to the four people that are left, uh, and then we'll vote after that. So I recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you, sir. My name is Dorothy Kramer, I live on SP Avenue here in Maynard, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. It was three point six million dollars, but with interest, it's four and a half million dollars. You said you would keep one bathroom open, and that there are a certain number of children. I'm curious about how you anticipate that we would be renting something, when you said that the code drove the number of bathrooms. Um, does that mean that the number of bathrooms open at a time for the number of people that are using the space? And additionally, don't we have to pay the school system to have a night custodian closing and opening the space if it's outside of school hours? I'd like to see more clarity and more, um, transparence about the actual costs of this, especially as an earlier gentleman talked about how the field is gonna need some significant help, and why can't we take a step back and, and overlook at the entire area and fold that in?
Um, so I'll try to segment that question into different ones. Um, the, the full occupancy is what drives the bathroom requirement of toilets too. So if, if their, the area is not being occupied, so as we had a, a guest who, who came in, who said, you're just walking the track, we would only have, there's no need to have all the bathrooms open, you would have one bathroom, just to control that access and maintenance need to maintain. Um, if there is, you know, a game, clearly, then you have full occupancy of the space, and that's where you'd have, you'd have to have, you know, all of them open. So that was the intent in, in explaining that the place, the area is not always occupied by school events, and in that case, we would still want people to benefit from using a bathroom, but we won't necessarily need to have all the bathrooms open, um, for that to occur, because people do, do exercise in the morning and all that as well. It's a community, it's a community space. Um, the maintenance, I, I, I'm gonna maybe look to Superintendent Haas on this, but I know that there is staff that stay for the regular games anyway. So it would just be incorporating, um, um, duties, I guess, um, but there are staff who stay when they have a games there. If someone were to rent the space, then we would be adding for rental for whatever that might be, of people who are not normally scheduled for that. So it might be like certain unions or four hours minimum, and so we would incorporate that into whatever potential rental, um, opportunity that it may be. What was the other parts of your question? I feel like I missed a couple.
I was just thinking about, uh, why aren't we taking a step back to incorporate looking at the field better? Because the people that have a lot more knowledge about the field than I have said it's really a concern.
So we had our, our DPW director who was on the task force, and, um, I think there is some debate as far as when the field would need to be, um, addressed as a whole. Right now, they do, they started resting the field over the summer, probably everyone saw, the field was not in use, so they are doing resting. Um, I think that would bring the project up, and that would be, that's not a need at this point for some people, that would be a phase two. So right now, it's just getting the, the facility up to code, and then, um, when the track, the track is not meeting its end of life yet either. So there would not be, um, it really would not make sense to do a field when you, the track isn't quite at its end of life yet, because the idea would be that you'd wanna expand the field, um, which would then require the track to be done as well. So it's not just one-off, and the plans do, um, do allow for that expansion of a field when we get to that point. But that was, that was not deemed at the inception as, um, uh, within the scope of this project, when the school committee met with the select board in twenty twenty-two to decide, put the RFP out, what we were looking for, for the designs. It was what was minimally required to get us to have the, the bleachers, um, and occupancy back in the area. Thanks, looks like we...
Recognize the microphone to my right.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Cranshaw, Mockingbird Lane. Uh, for me, it comes down to priorities. Um, the town has a lot of things coming up in the next few years that we need to spend money on, and we have to be smart about it. You know, for example, the Capital Planning Committee showed the Select Board in the summer a list of over fifty projects that are coming up and need to be done somehow, and funded somehow. And three point four million dollars would pay for half those projects, including five or six that involve the schools. Another thing I think about is, three point four million dollars, that means we pay three hundred thousand dollars a year in debt service. That's more than enough to lease out space for a senior center. So we could solve the senior center problem with that kind of money. And then lastly, come May, the school committee is coming back to town meeting to ask for an operational override. They're gonna be asking for probably half a million dollars a year, so that they can hire more teachers and avoid laying off teachers. So when it comes down to prioritize, for me, I'll pick the teachers over the bleachers.
Recognize the microphone to my left. Please, no clapping. Listen to what people say, and then make your decision.
Jane Audrey Newhouse at Main Street, and it's a lovely project, and I wish I could write a check to cover it, but I can't, and I'm not so sure the town can either. I've been in town since nineteen ninety, and I know to some of you, I'm still a newcomer, and in that time, um, I have voted for the Fowler School, I have voted for the high school, I have voted for the Green Meadow School, because I really believe that education is vital to the students, to the children, and to the town. And I'm wondering, and I, thank you, Bill, for the nice segue, I'm wondering when the senior citizens are going to be vital to the town? And when we will be pivotal and our needs will be considered? I wish we could have this, I really do, but we don't have unlimited resources, and there's a, a large group of people, larger than the number of people who might sit in the bleachers, who need some help in other ways. So make your decisions.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, Erica McDonald, ninety-eight Summer Street. I agree with this project, but I also agree that the fields are in terrible condition. I'm wondering what the cost was to include the fields and the track with the bleacher project?
Uh, when the RFP was put out, it was not deemed part of the project's scope, so it would be, um, revisiting the RFP to then put out, um, so that hasn't been cost estimated, because it wasn't part of the original RFP scope for the designer.
And that can't be, like, modified to get an estimate for that?
You'd have to put a, I'm gonna just pivot to our town administrator, because I know he's, was part of that process, um, if that's okay, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. What, um, Natasha Rivera's referring to is the procurement law, which requires to do a request for qualifications to re-identify who may be qualified to provide that level of the scope of the project. As she alluded to, the, the decision between the select board and the school committee years ago was to not include those aspects of the scope, and therefore, that was not procured. And so we don't have the information at the time. If we were to do that, we would have to re, re-procure and, and start really from scratch, because it wouldn't be fair to those initial vendors, we'd have to redo the procurement process all over.
Okay, we're gonna proceed to vote.
I'm sorry, I'd like to, uh, do one last...
I'm sorry, man, I cut off, uh, the people that were at the microphone, please sit down. We will proceed to vote, thank you.
So if I could just get in one small, uh, idea that I had...
Could I ask the, uh, stagnant arms to remove this person?
Yeah, could you remove me, because I'm causing problems, because I can't stand for a long time, and I thought they might give a little bit of a, a warning that, uh, you know, we're almost cut off?
I asked you, and I said, we were cutting it off, you didn't listen to the instructions.
No, I didn't wanna stand for a long time.
You were not at the microphone when you were asked to. Yes. Point of order, what would, what would you people like to do? What would you people like to do? Do you want him to do it, or do you wanna stay here all night? All those in favor of letting him speak, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? You can speak. I am shutting off the microphones, just so that we're clear, there will be no new things, we are not gonna be here until midnight. So I'm asking you, for the efficiency of the meeting, when I say we're gonna cut it off, get to the microphone before that time. Don't come after the announcement has been made. Thank you. Speak.
Thank you. I didn't know that announcement was coming, so I couldn't come to the mic. In any case, um, I had a couple of things that, uh, sprang to mind, and one is that I'm a little bit, oh, did I say Ron Labby, Glendale Street? Um, I'm a little upset that I'm not hearing anything about fundraising. Um, you know, there's a lot, it's a lot more money that can be fundraised, but I think it would be an important component for the kids to understand that it's, you know, part of their project. And the other thing is, even the largest arenas, like, uh, Gillette Stadium, have sold naming rights, so, you know, maybe Dunkin' Donuts Field instead of Alumni Field, and, and Pursue, I mean, he, they might be able to, you know, put up a big chunk of this money, it's just something to think about, because, you know, everybody wants this to happen, but people are concerned about spending more money. So that's what I had to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna proceed to vote. This, uh, is beyond the amount of money, the fifty-four thousand dollar trigger level, so it's gonna require, um, a secret ballot. It's also two-thirds votes, uh, because, uh, of the fact that it's gonna be a Proposition Two and a Half override. So please mark your ballot, number two, whether you're in favor or opposed. All right. So, Article number one was 197 in favor. Article, there were 10 noes and zero blanks. Now, like, while they're counting for Article three, I'd like to give the, onto the next motion.
Article four, move to act, move to approve Article four as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do" or "act" thereon.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
And I'm going to ask that they move Article five, so we can discuss these two together. Would you be kind enough to move Article five?
Move to approve Article five as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do" or "act" thereon.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee also recommends.
Okay. Mr. DeSilva.
Article four, the purpose of Article four is to transfer retained earnings within the Water Enterprise Fund to support the outfitting of an already acquired utility truck. The use of funds from the Water Enterprise retained earnings avoids borrowing and long-term interest payments. The procurement would not impact the water and sewer rates. That's Article four. Article five, the purpose of Article five is to transfer retained earnings within the Sewer Enterprise Fund to support an analysis of the town's wastewater treatment plant's capacity. This will allow the town to effectively explore replacement and upgrade options to the plant as major components of the treatment process are reaching their useful life expectancy. Those are Articles four and five.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll have to wait until we have the count from the previous article, because this is going to require a secret ballot as well for four and five. So you can be filling out your ballot number three, but you'll have to wait for it to get collected for a bit. Okay, would you collect the ballots for Article four, please? Got another one behind you. All right. On Article number three, there were 97 yeses, 136 noes. The article does not carry. While the, our counters are tallying up the score here, we'll move on to Article six.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Gavin, member of the Select Board. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article six as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do" or "act" thereon.
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this article is in order to help with our Powder Mill Road sewer pump station. As you may know, the Powder Mill Road pump station is critical to our sewer collection system, and it's identified as the system's most vulnerable failure point. And the reason that this is so important is, should this station have a catastrophic failure, we would face dangerous potential ecological and pollution exposure on the Aspid River, and the cleanup costs associated with that would be on us. Further, the pump station is in need of improvements and upgrades. There was a previous grant that was awarded and resulted in the design of an upgrade, and determined that this station needed to be upgraded in size. This article will require acquisition of land via easements, which, as you probably know, are takings of land for which the town compensates or it's gifted to the community by the property owner. We have estimates on the cost of the acquisition of the easements, and those affected by these easements have been notified, and they are, in case you are concerned, 10, 11, and 12 Ethlin Circle, 11 Pine Hill Road, and 70 and 76 Powder Mill Road. Importantly to this body, no funding is required on this article, because the necessary funding is available in our already collected Sewer Enterprise Fund that we have already all paid as part of our water and sewer collection fees on a quarterly basis. The estimated cost from the Sewer Enterprise Fund that we are asking for approval on is approximately $14,300. That is it, Mr. Moderator. Oh, if you want to look at the nice, the nice graphs that were designed, I told the moderator at the beginning of the meeting, I was going to forget the.
Can we do the slide with the land?
The graphs. This shows the homes, and this shows also where the pump station is located. But if you all don't know where the pump station is located, it's essentially behind Middlesex Bank and behind Vic Tommel's old flower shop back there. That's where it's located on Powder Mill Road. Sorry.
Dave.
Okay. If, here's the, a diagram or a map of where the location is for this particular pump station. It's, and those are the, how the, the properties that are affected by the easements that are being requested. And as I mentioned in my remarks, all have already been notified about this. And the pump station itself is located on Powder Mill Road, sort of behind the, behind the Middlesex Bank.
Okay, there'll be no questions. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, because it deals with real estate. It's also a secret ballot, because it deals with real estate. So on ballot number four, please mark your entry. All right. So the results of Articles four and five was 204 yes, seven noes, the article carries. Mr. Stevens, would you move Article number seven?
Move to approve Article seven as printed in the warrant, except for the words "to do" or "act" thereon. And I'd like to introduce.
Do I have a, do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Yes, Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee recommends, if you didn't hear that.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Meg Sobkowitz-Klein, who has been heading up the solid waste and recycling task force, put a great number of hours into this over the last year or so.
Thank you, and thanks to the moderator for allowing the task force to speak on this So first, we'd like to explain what exactly an enterprise fund is. Enterprise funds separate money spent and collected for the trash and recycling, in this case, utility, thank you, that makes it easier, from general fund budget into a separately managed fund. Enterprise funds allow the town to make projections based on collection and disposal markets, and to control the rate at which prices go up, and mitigate abuse and inefficiencies in our trash and disposal system. They're a financial mechanism that allows the utility to protect the level of services. So we'd like to describe how an enterprise fund will benefit Maynard. It'll allow us to control costs to the town and the residents, incentivize trash reduction, which is a central tenet of our task force, and to provide flexible and convenient service to all residents. So first, we just want to quickly describe what the challenges are faced by trash and recycling programs in Maynard and across the state, which are lack of timely and complete financial data available, rising costs across the state, and indeed the U.S., for trash and recycling collection, disposal, and recycling processing. Also, programs are facing decreasing revenues, increasing pressure from the state to reduce our waste generation, and it's a challenge to maintain long-term financial stability and to create long-term planning, such that we can ensure cost control for these programs. The benefits of an enterprise fund are that it's structured to be run like a nonprofit business, providing quicker response and reducing costs. It identifies the total cost and related revenues for the service, and provides information to analyze the extent to which the revenues are covering expenditures. This retains and maintains investments, incomes, and surpluses, such that we can make decisions on user charges and other financing items. And it also provides both short and long-term financial perspectives and program flexibility to, we can adapt to cost fluctuations as they come at us. So we really urge everybody to adopt the enterprise fund as part of this warrant.
make us pay higher stickers, are you going to reduce our taxes accordingly?
So I just want to clarify that the setting up the enterprise fund says nothing about what the price of the stickers will be.
I'm sorry, the question is the Select Board.
The question goes to me, and I decide who answers. And I'm going to let the presenter answer first.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, so the setting up of the enterprise fund says nothing about anything about sticker prices or other elements of the program and how that will be financed. It's really just setting up a separate pricing mechanism, much like a utility, much like our water and sewer are set up now.
I'll point out that in the presentation to the Select Board and others, there are projections of increased budget, there are projections of increased sticker prices, there are projections of changing the sticker to a quarterly fee. So I think it's being a little dishonest thing for the Select Board to imply that, you know, moving this from the budget to fee-based without lowering the real estate taxes accordingly would be, I don't know, that's just a problem for me. I hope the Select Board remembers that when they do, in fact, shift all those costs over.
So I would now allow the Select Board to comment on that if they would choose to.
Simply reinforce what Meg has said, that that discussion is simply not what we're voting on tonight. That may be considered in the future, but tonight is simply taking a separate accounting mechanism for the enterprise fund, and that's what the article is asking for your permission to do.
Okay. I recognize the microphone in the center.
This writer still on our Seventeen Sunset Road. And essentially, a follow-up on his question, it seems to me that you're setting it up so that the Select Board can take the money, the half, half the money that is coming from taxes, and use it for other things in the future, and in effect, have a tax increase that doesn't involve a town vote. Am I wrong in understanding that, or is that what can happen here?
No, to reiterate, we're really just setting up the financing mechanism now, and I also want to reiterate that costs will go up to the town for trash and recycling. Those are going up statewide, and that's not something that we can, what we want to be able to do is anticipate those cost rises and control the costs more effectively for the town residents.
You didn't really address, my question was about the half, half of the money that is currently coming out of taxes. Once the enterprise fund is set up, can the Select Board can just have that go away? And we would pay all of the cost of the solid waste, and so effectively, a tax increase without a town vote, if I understand.
So, no, so right now, what happens is the monies that go into trash and recycling come, you're right, from two different sources, and it's not distributed fairly. So if you generate less trash, you're still paying the full tax burden for those services, right? So setting up the enterprise fund more allows us to really account for every dollar that is used in the trash and recycling program effectively and properly. And then we can see exactly what monies and keep it as a separate fund, rather than having it at a budget line item in the town budget, which makes it very uncontrolled and unable to, we're unable to account properly for any fluctuations that occur in the future.
So the same amount of money is going to go from the town taxes into the enterprise fund?
We have not, we have not figured out the details of the program yet. We're just setting up the financing mechanism.
The intention is at the outset, there would be no change to that program, that the same amount coming from stickers and from taxes would go to the enterprise fund. That would restrict the Select Board so that money that went in from your taxes to the enterprise fund, instead of the general fund, would now have to be used to pay for solid waste and recycling. So this actually puts a restriction on us that the money that goes into that fund from taxes has to be used for solid waste and recycling.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Thank you, Justine St. John, two Barrowloney Circle. So I think Jeff answered one of my questions, which was, how will the enterprise fund initially be funded? So for this next year, it will be the cost of what's ever going in, and then the cost of stickers will go into that fund as well. So the following year, I'm anticipating that it would still be kind of what a couple people have said, it's going to be a ratepayer-funded program that would need to support the entire cost of the trash recycling program. Is that correct?
We are, it's able to be set up as a gradual change so that we can manage the, any changes to any residents or the program itself as we go. So it can be share-funded as we transition. So it doesn't have to be a one-year and then switch everything to-
Do you know how long it would take for us to realize the true cost?
Those are details that we haven't settled out yet, but getting a good firm handle on the price of the service is a start.
Wouldn't you get that when you went out for the RFP, though?
I recognize Justin DiMarco to help us answer that question.
You can ask if Justin can speak. Yes, I will recognize-
I would like to ask Justin, the DPW Director, to answer that, address that question.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a tall guy. Hi. To your point, Justine, so as part of our program adoption of the Solid Waste Task Force-
Can I just interrupt, introduce yourself?
Oh, Justin DiMarco, Public Works Director. As part of your question, we are narrowing down, we're about ninety percent complete with our full recommendation to the board, and we're considering the RFP, but that is also tied to the potential of adoption of this enterprise fund. In order to, in order for us to look at this holistically, you have to understand we're on a timeline. We have a contract right now with the O'Harvey that's set to expire on June thirtieth. RFPs take a good amount of time. Without the enterprise funds, certain financial mechanisms could sway the final vote and recommendation that we bring to the board, which may actually reduce an RFP. If you're unaware, I know Justine's aware, but for the, for the audience, under master general law, solid waste is exempt from procurement. So it is a situation of a conversation that we have quite often with why we still have the O'Harvey. We really want to take a robust look is what, that's actually what we're doing as a solid waste task force. We've had thirty posted meetings. We've been working on this for over a year. We really want to take a robust approach to this. That would include an RFP process, but there's timelines that play, and this is one of them.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Hello, Craig Ultimo, sixteen Garfield Avenue. This may be a little bit outside the scope of this, but I'm just curious, a lot of talk about recycling and trash, and I'm curious if compost has been considered? There's a lot of, you know, organic waste, expensive to haul, very easy to just not have to pay to truck away and reuse for fertilizer and such, and is that, has that been a discussion? And is there, is there thinking around that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a big part of the discussions we've been having on the program details, so I thank you for that comment. So, and we're going to be welcoming, and we've had, we had a giant survey that hopefully a lot of you participated in, and we'll be welcoming a lot of other comments as we nail down the details of the program for sure. Financing mechanism is first, so.
Recognize the microphone to my left.
Hello, Ellen McManus, eleven Summit Street. It's come up a number of times, but just to clarify, does this financing change, change anything about what does and doesn't need to be approved at town meetings vis-à-vis money, changes in sticker price, changes in taxes, et cetera?
Somebody else besides me should-
I will recognize his town manager.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. So yes and no. Right now, the service is paid, as she alluded to, in both the trash stickers, but it's heavily subsidized by your taxes. And in the general fund, just as you approved this evening, you fund that every year. So in the future, let's just say this is approved this tonight. In the future, you would approve enterprise accounts similar to what you already do for sewer and water. So you'd still have to go to a back-to-town meeting to have the overall budget for those enterprise accounts approved. But the rates and whatnot would be reflective of how we do for the water and sewer accounts, so that would be more within the Select Board, and then ultimately, the appropriation has to come to town meeting.
Thank you.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Benzoski, nine Crane Avenue. As a whole, enterprise funds are actually, I'm very much in support of this, and specifically relating to bullet number four, retaining and maintaining investment income and surplus. So when you have an enterprise fund that is set up, it is specific to a specific item. Our water bills pay for our water infrastructure, our sewer bills pay for our sewer infrastructure, things like that. What this will allow us to do is a bill will pay specifically for our solid waste and trash in that case. Right now, if we were to be in a situation that we had additional trash money, money that you would collect from your tax dollars for trash, we could put that toward anything because it's in the operating budget. Right now, what this allows us to do is this enterprise fund will force it so those dollars will go very specifically toward trash in bettering that infrastructure. So again, it's like one-for-one, instead of, as Jeff alluded to, allowing the Select Board to have control or others, it has a town vote to have control about where that goes to. Again, it keeps the money directed into a very specific location, in this case for this enterprise fund, solid waste. So again, speaking for this article.
In the spirit of lessons learned and continuous improvement, if anybody would like to speak on this, please come to the microphones now, because I'm going to shut off conversation. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Yeah, Mark DeCastro, Cutting Drive. So I guess my question is, if this becomes more of a use-based trash, you know, it's mostly in the sticker, a lot of people might start using private services more, right? So how is that going to impact, if all of a sudden I'm sitting there like, I'm not, I'm not paying it in my taxes, I'm going to get a private service, you have less people participating, and now it becomes even more expensive? Was that considered?
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. So the task force has been working really hard to identify all the needs and desires of the town people so that we can make this a program that works for everyone. We're very cognizant of the fact that we don't want people leaving our town service. We want it to be working for everyone, and that's a primary goal.
Okay, no further discussion. This is a majority vote and an open. All those in favor, please raise your ballot. Okay. All those opposed, please raise your ballot. Motion carries. And before we do Article eight, the results of Article six, there were four noes, so two times four is eight, so there has to be eight or more yes votes to pass, two-thirds, and we got one hundred and seventy-seven, so it clearly passes easily.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will move to approve Article eight as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
The purpose of this article is to allow the town to petition the state to add a package store license to the town's quota, to be applied for specifically by the corner store at forty-nine Walnut Street. This proposed new license would be the town's fifth package store license.
Would you like them to speak?
I think you're just taking questions, correct? Or do you have a presentation?
They're available for questions.
Okay. Any questions? I recognize, I recognize the microphone in the center.
Jeff Dutton, Wolfhead Street. I was under the impression that store has a liquor license. They sell beer and wine. So what are we asking for?
I believe this is a license, so to sell beer and wine is a different license from hard alcohol. So this is a separate license to sell, in addition to beer and wine, liquor.
So they would be selling spirits?
Yes.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Jill Snyder, where I live, five Harrison Street, right. And just like they say in Cabaret, money makes the world go around, right? So my question is, how much money will the town make? And how much additional money would the town make with this type of license versus what they already have? And the second question, because I don't understand how these package store licenses work, I'm admitting my ignorance on this, and is it a one-time fee or is it an ongoing thing? Mr. Moderator, that's my question.
I'm going to defer to either Mr. Hurley or the Town Administrator on this question.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. It's not clear right now how much more in tax growth the town might realize with this additional goods. Again, it's up to the applicant, even though we would be petitioning the state in order to increase our quota, and that license would then be issued to that particular applicant, whether or not they use it or not is up to them. Similarly, Russell's Convenience Store on Main Street, we went through the exact same process a number of years ago, and they have yet to increase their inventory to, to hard liquor. So just increasing is still requirement of the business to take advantage of that, and then we would see that. But that question was not asked of the Select Board. The second question, what was your second question?
I was just trying to, yeah, I was trying to understand how much more money we would make, and is this a one-time, would it be a one-time that we would receive this extra money, the town, meaning us? Or is, if that's like an ongoing, do they have to renew it?
Right, so they would have to renew it, but initially, there would be the upfront, because it's a new license, so they'd have to, they'd have to pay the fee for the new license, and then, and then every year.
And do we have any ball, is there a ballpark on how much extra tax revenue that would be?
I do not, unless the business themselves have done, I presume in their business model, they've, they've realized how much more money they can make, otherwise they wouldn't ask. But, so I'd have to, Mr. Moderator, I'd have to defer to the business.
Does Mr. Jenron know?
There he is.
Mr. Moderator, I am Attorney Edmund Hurley, and I represent the Maynard Corner Store. The owner of it is here. He is Mr. Michael Patel. So obviously, the business, it desires to increase its sales, but there's no specific number.
Right.
I note, though, that we have one hundred and twenty-six people, neighbors, residents of Maynard who signed statements approving it.
Sure. You never know, you don't know how much sales are going to be, but I guess I was wondering if they had anticipated if they're going to bring a lot more money or not to the town.
Well, they, they plan to improve the premises.
Sure.
So, so I think the question is, what is the license fee that the town gets, and is it recurring? Is that your question?
That was my question, but then what I heard was that there wasn't a license fee. That's what I'm trying to understand. How much money are we going to get as a town if this thing goes through? That's what I'm trying to get to. And do we get a one-time amount of money, or is it just, do we continue to get extra money?
I'm under the impression that the-
I'm not sure why this is called, am I not saying this correctly? Does anyone else understand what I'm trying to say?
No, it sounds very clear to me.
Okay, thank you.
I don't understand why they can't answer either. How much are you going to pay to get the license if you, if it's awarded? And do you have to pay it every year?
I believe the Commonwealth, the A-B-C-C, I'm not sure of the answer. There's, I think there's a charge, it might be a two-year license, and there's a fee for a few hundred dollars. But I don't know the exact amount.
And then any extra sales of the tax money would come back to the town based on the sales? That makes sense. Okay, that's, that's kind of an answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. This also is open majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your ballot book. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to the end of the evening, and before we leave here tonight, I would like to thank WAVM for all that they've done. Yes, you can clap now. I'd also like to thank our counters here who did a wonderful job. Can I have the microphone over to the right, please?